So we're going to call and order the meeting of the East Brandywine Township Board of Supervisors AM session Thursday, March 6, 2025. A recording device will be in use during this meeting. We're going to open with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, public comment for agenda items. Rules for conduct of public meetings established by Resolution 2001-08. The time allocated to each individual making a comment shall be three minutes unless otherwise set by the presiding officer. Additional public comment may be granted at the discretion of the presiding officer at the conclusion of the meeting. Do we have any comment? Step to the podium and state your name.
I'm John Black, Chair of the Historical Commission. I wanted to make the board aware of an issue with the Brandywine Walk development. Brandywine Walk Track contains a spring house that was originally part of the Weaver Farm. The spring house is well over 100 years old and is classified as a historic resource in the township. The development plan for Brandywine Walk contains a number of conditions which must be met. One of those conditions is that the spring house must be maintained in good condition. About six months ago, it has brought to the attention of the Historical Commission that the roof on the spring house had collapsed.
This is the spring house as it is today. Carl's not here today.
No, but you can place it on the table right next to you.
You can set it on that table and it can go up on the front. Bring that camera down closer, you can blow it up a little bit. There you go. It's a little bit of a delay there. John, I'm going to give you some leadway, but just keep in mind if there's a time limit to the comments.
I'm well within the time limit.
Thank you.
The need for repair was communicated to Brandywine Walk four months ago. It is not incumbent on the township to request that repairs be made. It is the owner's responsibility to monitor the spring house and keep it in good condition. The damage to the spring house roof is clearly visible from hundreds of feet away. This photo was taken from standing on Horseshoe Pike. It is damaged, the damage has gone unrepaired for six months or more. As we speak, the spring house condition continues to deteriorate and it is in serious need of repair. Yet this issue has not been addressed by Brandywine Walk. It is my understanding that in one of the later agenda items, Brandywine Walk will be asking for relief from one of the other conditions of the development plan. I would ask the board to please consider Brandywine Walk's failure to abide by the already agreed condition to properly maintain the spring house before considering granting them any relief from other conditions of the development plan. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
John, is that a metal roof? It's hard to tell from the picture.
I believe it is metal.
Okay. And I don't think the condition is in this paperwork that we have in front of us, but if it is, do you know what, what condition number it was and the?
I'm sorry, I don't know. It was on the development plan.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I recall being involved in that conversation with Sebastian, I believe, at the time with regards to the spring house and agreeing to restore the spring house and put trails there and have a plaque that would recognize its significance historically. So I think Brandywine Walk understands their obligation there. If they don't, we can cover that, I guess, going forward, but I think Luke can work with them in getting this resolved, I believe. So, you know, we'll keep you posted on the progress there, what we can do to get this thing protected, I guess, is what you're asking for now. What the township needs to have done is have it protected from further damage, correct? Is that what you're stating?
The condition is that the owner must maintain the spring house in perpetuity.
And I would take it a step further. If damage continues to deteriorate and the foundation becomes a problem, it won't be just the roof anymore, it will be the foundation as well.
Exactly, it'll be a very expensive repair.
Yep, okay.
All right.
Thanks, John.
Thank you very much for considering this matter. Unfortunately, I have a workplace meeting at 9:30 this morning, so I'm going to have to.
Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on agenda items? I see none, so we're going to move on to the minutes of previous meeting. Approval will be February 20, 2025, Board of Supervisors meeting minutes. Do I get a motion? Anybody have any questions?
I have none, and I'll make this a motion.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're going to look at the Treasurer's Report Authorization to Pay the Bills and Improve Payroll. I did look at the Treasurer's Report, everything looked in order. Do I get a motion to approve that?
Make a motion to authorize the paying of the bills.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we're going to move on to old business. I don't see anything listed as old business. Therefore, we'll move on to new business. So we have the 2025 police vehicle, we're going to have Chief Cozy.
Yep, good morning. In your packet you have the 2025 CoStarz pricing for the 2025 police interceptors that we use in the department. The reason for my request today is just to get approval to purchase these vehicles. The price this year with the CoStarz discount comes out to $46,910 per vehicle. We were provided budgeting money to purchase three this year, however, at this time we're only asking permission to purchase two. We're going to wait as we get later into the year to see if we need the third one this year, and that would be a total of $93,820. I want to make a note that as part of the purchase with, this is with New Holland Ford, we get trade-in values deducted off of the price of the vehicles when those cars are delivered, and I don't have that information yet, but that typically has been between $8,000 and $10,000 a vehicle comes off the price. So I would just request the permission to go ahead and order two 2025 police interceptor utilities from New Holland Ford.
And your budget?
Yeah, this is provided to us.
If I may, just add a friendly amendment for the purposes of the minutes. This is a purchase per CoStarz contract. The CoStarz contract is indicated in your meeting, in your packet materials, and that CoStarz contract number? Thank you.
Okay, I'm making a motion to approve the 2025 police interceptor utility all-wheel-drive base with the said CoStarz description number I just read aloud for purchase of two to total $93,820.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to Matt Van Lou for the sale of the X-Mark Laser Zero-Turn mower.
Thank you. Last month, the board approved the purchase of a Hustler Zero-Turn mower. So this, this month I'm going to ask approval to sell our 2012 X-Mark. It is a 2012 X-Mark, 27 horsepower, 60-inch laser zero-turn mower. Approximately 2,170 hours would be advertised in the Deo local and sold on municipal. Respectfully request permission to advertise our 2012 X-Mark.
Do you have any idea what that's, that's a bid process, so you have a minimum set on that? Or you don't want to reveal that, obviously, because it's a bid.
Right, generally we do very well with those sales, so we generally don't post a minimum on that. We're required under the Second Class Township Code to advertise items that we believe are over $2,000, and I'm pretty sure we should get a minimum of $2,000 on that.
I had one additional thing. The first ask is permission to advertise, and as Roadmaster Van Lou indicated, we have to do so if we reasonably anticipate the value is more than $2,000. There will be a second agenda item after the conclusion of the auction to award, and at that time, if the prices aren't to the satisfaction of the Board of Supervisors, you may reject all bids.
Sure.
Okay, I'll make a motion to advertise the sale of the X-Mark Laser Z mower for the Public Works Department.
And I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to Brandywine Walk Development. Brian Nagel.
Good morning. I'm Brian Nagel on behalf of, well, I think everybody here except Mr. Taraji knows I represent the developer, I also represent the builder. So I'm just going to first speak to Luke, John, I want you to go to his work meeting and let that.
Okay.
Up there, just so you have that.
Thank you.
I am aware of the condition that pertains to the spring house. I know that's in the list of conditions. I'm not aware, I wasn't aware that that issue existed. I don't know if my client, the developer, is aware that that, I don't know who they notified, but I can certainly contact the developer after the meeting today and find out what's going on, and I'll let Luke know. Certainly, the developer's responsible to maintain the spring house, and then it gets turned over to the Home Works Association that takes on that obligation. So I don't know what the status of that is, I don't know who's been notified, but I'll check and report back on that. I don't think, I mean, obviously it needs to be attended to. I doubt it's a problem in terms of being taken care of, so, but I'll find out and let Justin put on the screen the lots. Obviously, the issue that we're in front of you today pertains to, we've got the, we've got the Brandywine Walk community. It's 161 singles and 134 townhomes. The issue that we're here to talk to you about today affects only the singles. And what's going on as NVR builds out this community, all the homeowners who are coming in, many of them want the ability to build a deck to within 15 feet of the rear property line, which is permitted by the township's ordinances. I think you've already been briefed and you're aware that there's a condition that a building and deck envelope is to be shown on the plan, and there's a note, there's a note on the plan, I have a little, I think you probably have most of this material already, but there is, there was a note that was developed and placed on the plan, and I think those of, those of you who were involved are aware that NVR was involved during preliminary, preliminary plan approval to some extent. This note came into being during final plan approval, and when the final plan was developed, you really just show one envelope on, on the plan, and it's referred to in the note as a building and deck envelope. So your staff is interested in that to me, that you can't have the building or the deck extending beyond that line. However, if you look at your ordinance, you would be allowed to go beyond that line under the ordinance, but not under the terms of that note that was on the plan. What we're looking for is an ability to either interpret the note to allow what the township ordinances allow, or to make a simple revision to the plan that would allow folks to have a deck. If you, if you page back in the packet that I just gave to you, and you go to the third page, you'll see the section 39975 of the township's ordinance, of the zoning ordinance, and you'll see there highlighted, it does allow a deck to be within 15 feet of the rear property line. If you then page to the next ordinance, which is the H Qualified Residential Community, which is a specific ordinance that pertains to the type of development that Brandywine Walk is, obviously, if you go to the second page of that, it refers to that same section in the front, 39975A, and it says notwithstanding 39975A, you can also have a projection into the front yard. So, so it's very clear under the township ordinances that in a community like this, you could have decks within 15 feet of the rear property line. The issue, the issue that NVR is facing is an issue that really impacts this community only. When I say this community, I mean Brandywine Walk. It doesn't impact the larger township residents in any way, and what NVR is finding is that many homeowners of, the buyers of the singles, this doesn't apply to the townhomes again, they do want to be able to have a deck. We don't really see any good reason that they, they shouldn't be able to construct a deck to within 15 feet of the rear property line. Under the township's ordinances, a deck is not considered impervious. Notwithstanding that issue, even if the decks that we're talking about here were impervious, there's still, there's still ample stormwater management to account for those, that additional construction, but in reality, they're considered pervious, not impervious. But even if they weren't, it would be, it would be a non-issue with respect to impervious coverage.
Excuse me, Brian.
Yeah.
Were we 50% on that stormwater for decks, Luke?
No. Go ahead. Okay. Will you permit me to do a quick bit of editing on the video here? Sorry. I am so looking forward to our new Assistant Township Manager to drive the, in your writing. There we go. All right, so the, what I think you're referring to is a recent amendment to the, the definition of impervious surface, and the previous definition had decks with nothing underneath them listed as 100% impervious and swimming pools as 50% pervious. The new definition has both decks with nothing underneath them and swimming pools as 100% pervious.
Okay. I just couldn't remember which, when this was pulled, where we were at that time.
And when, when this was designed, that was not the case.
Right, right.
Resolution, this project struggled to get their stormwater data in line, and they had, you know, maximum stormwater out over the lot. So now that we've changed that, that's, that's, we'll get into that conversation.
But even if, even if you apply the, the provision as it existed previously, there's ample stormwater management facilities in this community to accommodate those decks, even if you considered them impervious. So if you look at the last sheet and, and what's on the board, this shows, in the blue, you'll see the, the building envelope and then the backside of the pink, and then the pink area is the, is the deck area that the home builder and many of the homeowners want to be able to utilize.
So you're saying the building envelope includes the 10-foot deck?
It does not.
The building envelope only includes the house itself?
Correct, and.
How did that happen?
Well, keep in mind, the term on the plan and all the approvals is building and deck on.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, and that's why.
It's, it's, it's a great question. I don't know how it happened. I was, I was saying this.
Shorten the house.
What's that?
Shorten the house, make the house less deep, and you'll stay in the envelope.
But I guess the, what we're, what we're, what we're here to talk to you about is how it happened at the time, and I was involved. I don't know how we ended up with a building envelope rather than a building envelope and also showing the separate deck envelope as it's permitted by the township ordinance.
Agreed to it.
No, I, no, I understand that my client agreed to it. What I'm saying is, I don't know how we got to the point where the building envelope wasn't differentiated from the deck envelope that's permitted under the township's ordinance. I'm not, I'm not disputing the fact that it was agreed to and it was a condition, that's why we're here. We're here to talk about, once we got from the final plan, it was approved, and all the conditions that were accepted and everything, and then NVR got into the field and they're building out this project, and they're dealing with real homeowners in the real world on the ground, people are coming to them and saying, hey, your ordinance allows, the township ordinance allows this. Well, the township's interpreting the plan note this way, and there's a conflict. And so they're coming to NVR and saying, you know, what is the issue with having decks in accordance with the township ordinance like everybody else in the township could have? And so we're coming to you and we're, we're raising the issue, and we're asking the supervisors to work with the builder and the homeowners to address this issue. It's, it's an issue that, in reality, it doesn't impact the township welfare, it doesn't impact any other resident in the township, it only impacts the, the home builder and the homeowners in Brandywine Walk. So we're coming to you and asking you to look at this issue, take a reasonable approach to helping us address this issue. We still have 130 single-family homes to sell in the community. It comes up in every sale discussion, and, and my client can speak to this and how they're experiencing it, so he can understand it, but, but that's what we're seeking to address. And I'm, I would ask the supervisors not to look at this as, look, you agreed to it and you're stuck with it, because there's really no good reason to take that approach here. We're, I'm asking you to look at this as.
For another bite of the apple, and.
No, no, I don't agree with that.
We can go back to other cases that we've had in the past year, you know, with regards to Jerry Manley and McGlucas case, these people all then would get other, another bite of the apple. I'm not sure, you know, my experience with development work, when I look at the resolution, if there's anything in there that catches my attention, I address it at that point, and that never gets in. So I'm not sure what happened here and how you guys didn't pick this up, but I'm not sure what we can really do at this point. So you're saying you cannot build any decks?
Well, I'm, I'm not, first of all, I'm not saying we can't build any decks. I'm not saying that.
Well, and I'm sorry to interrupt, but in fact, the design of the house typically has a rear covered deck area, at least on some of the houses.
I mean.
Yeah, please.
Good morning, everyone. Robert McCracken with NVR. Thank you for your time this morning. Everybody's bringing up valid points, and really, this is why we keep going around and around on this issue with the homeowners. So to date, I believe we have 31 residents that have settled and moved into Brandywine Walk, and as Brian noted, we have around 100 more homes to either sell or have already been sold but yet to settle. And our anticipation is that this item is going to continue to come up with the residents as we move forward with the project, which is why we're here today. And even beyond, after we're done, we anticipate you're going to continue to have residents come forth and bring questions and try to, I guess, work around this particular condition. So that's why we're here today, is to try to just get out in front of it with everyone. Yes, you're, you're right, sir, that some of the homes, the smaller floor plans, can fit outdoor living. Some of the larger floor plans cannot, and you can imagine that the folks that are buying the larger floor plans would like to have outdoor living, just like anyone else. So the question that we're coming to you guys with is, you know, we've gone through all the plan notes, you know, we're not trying to make a legal argument to say, oh, this word was written this way, or this word was written this way. We're here with common sense, saying, hey, we understand this is probably what was agreed to with the developer, and as you guys understand, we're the home builder, we're not the developer, so we're the ones dealing with the end users, the ones that are going to be living in the, in the township. So we're trying to work with our residents to try to provide the best opportunity for them to enjoy their home in, in the township.
We'll get back to common sense with regards to this project overall. Now, one of the things with this project was, we've got 600 cars getting dumped on our local roads. When we worked with the developer, there was an emergency road that was to be installed down here, the developer didn't agree to install it, they only agreed to do the engineering on it. We're getting $1,200 in impact fee, that's it. That's not enough to do anything in this township to improve the roadways that we need to improve here. Do we get another bite of the apple? Do we get help in what we're dealing with in this township with regards to our traffic issues?
Well, I would.
Because basically, we were told we can't legally do anything, you guys, this is the ordinance, this is what we got to follow, so you guys don't have to build the emergency road out of the township, and there's some other things. You don't, you basically don't have to do any traffic improvements whatsoever in this township for this project. Do we get another bite of the apple?
Well, I would, I would offer up that I'm here asking for relief, so I think this is a conversation that can go both ways. Again, I, I'm not trying to put you guys in the middle of this. I'm the builder, I'm just buying lots from the developer and building the homes, but I recognize that, you know, I'm part of the development project. So whatever feedback you have, sir, I'm happy to take back to, you know, the developer and, and ask those questions for sure.
Well, I guess for another day, I don't think we're going to be doing much here on this.
My recommendation would be at this point, close out your case and then give us an opportunity to maybe even individually meet with our solicitor and give our feedback.
That'd be great. Okay, so I guess.
I just had one question. Are any, maybe I got my numbers wrong, 31 of these single properties that would want a deck have already been built? Did I hear that right? And there's still an additional 130? Now, if that math is right, let's just call it 160, 170 right now. Of those, are there any of those models that are, is that just a model that can, doesn't already come with a deck? Or is that the models that, because you're still going to sell models that would come with the deck, correct?
Sure, sure. So, yeah, it's, it's not all.
Okay.
You're correct.
So maybe like a quarter to 50% of that of the?
I would say, you know, without that math.
Hear your customers to that?
It's probably 50% or so. But I guess to go back to the point, though, even the ones that have bought the smaller models would still like the opportunity to be treated like everyone else in the township from a deck set pack.
And then my second question would be, are there any easements in that 15-foot buffer zone between the property lines? Are there any easements that you got? Could we have that at, I think, over at John Pike and the Neighborhood Development, the one off of 2E2?
Downwards.
Downwards, yeah. I think they have some setbacks and easement issues.
If there was, and that would further limit the deck usage, all we're asking is that it be repaired fairly across the community the same way. So it would, those particular lots, if that was the case, would be further limited, and we understand that. We're not asking for any additional loadings.
As I look at the neighboring 55 and Order communities, everything is very uniformed. You know, you look at the old Howe Farm on Little Washington, you look at the old Baldwin Farm, there's several of these projects in the areas, specifically in the Coachville School District, and they are very uniform, and I, I don't know what. You'll have to look at your design on your product and see what you can do.
And I would just like to also add, just to close this out, I know Apple Cross community has some models in their 5B section that only allow an eight-by-nine deck, that's it. And then there's other models right across the street in the same portion of that 5B development that can be double that. So I know Apple Cross has been restrained to nine-by-eight decks in, in one section of their community, just for what it's worth.
But just, I'm not familiar with that community.
5B is, is actually pretty much right across the street from you guys. That's, that's the Bonsville, Bonsville Mill, I'm sorry, yeah, Bonsville Mill entrance to the, to the single towns.
Do you know off the top of your head why those ones were restricted further than others?
I don't off the top of my head, but it could have been a stormwater related at that time, maybe, I don't know.
Agreed, and at the time, it might have made sense from an engineering perspective. I guess to, to close this up and thank you for your time again, to Brian's point is, we have 31 people that have already settled, there's going to be 100 more folks that move in. Let's call it at least half of those at a minimum, we're going to be adversely impacted pretty significantly for outdoor living without some relief here. And then the others, to your point, although they can still have outdoor living, would like to enjoy more of their outdoor space if they could. This request does not impact stormwater. This request does not impact anyone. This request does not impact anyone else in the township. This request does impact the 130 people that are going to be living in the community. So I understand your point, sir, about common sense, but what we're just trying to do is come to a resolution that could be a win-win for possibly the township and for the residents that are going to be living in the township.
Understood. We have a gentleman that would like to make comment.
Jim Buxala, I'm on the Planning Commission. I'd just like to make a general comment that this was a focus of conversation during approval of the plan, and it was given a lot of consideration. This was not something that was put onto the plan willy-nilly. It was a deliberate decision made to do this. And I don't recall the exact reasons for it, whether it was impervious or the bulk area requirements for the lots. But it was a decision that was made to try to avoid the request for relief from the individual resident of the township and coming through the variance and relief processes.
And I recall this project, they basically had a blank canvas when they started to design this development. So they had flexibility to design this in many different ways. And it sat dormant for a little while because they were struggling with some stormwater COVID hit. There was a lot of little things that came about. They switched engineers, went from E.B. Walsh to Denny Howe, and then they came back in to the meeting and said, we got our HOP, we had to adjust the road out on the Reesville, oh, and by the way, we added a few more lots. Instead of going back and reconfiguring the project so to accommodate anything like this, they decided to just add more lots. So it's a little confusing.
But I just want to emphasize, it was a deliberate decision to do this. And the other issue I want to bring up is that the houses that are close to the existing houses on East Reesville Road, visually, as you drive by, the houses are right there already. So any additional relief with regard to setbacks to the back yards is going to bring those structures closer to the existing homes. And I know that there's a couple people there already that are sensitive to that.
The decks will be on top of each other.
So I raise that clear consideration as well.
All right. Thank you, Jimmy. Do you have any other comment? Go ahead, Brian.
I think I said before, I wasn't involved in the preliminary approval. I don't, I was involved during the transition from E.B. Walsh to D.L. Howe. At that point in time, I don't remember any lots being added. I do remember what Mr. Buxala said, which is that this was discussed during the final plan approval.
Yeah, there was a couple added out on the end by Reesville. The one was added, I believe. It was only a couple, I think, that were added.
Yeah, maybe it went from 294 to 295, but at most, it was one lot. But I do specifically remember what Mr. Buxala was talking about, and the goal of the discussion, as I recall it, and I can't sit here and tell you I have 100% recall of everything that was discussed, but the primary thing that was discussed is exactly what Jim said, which is that we're trying to avoid a situation that was similar to what happened in another community, I believe it was Hillendale, where a bunch of people were coming in and asking for variances. And so we wrote up, there was a series of notes and things written up to try to avoid that situation. And that's a note that's on the plan.
And, yeah, there was a lot of thought put into this.
I agree. But the distinction here is, this is not a variance issue. You don't need, you wouldn't need a variance from the township's ordinance to have these decks. This is permitted by the township's ordinance. So whatever you want to say about how it was developed, it was never developed with the goal of trying to prevent the builder or the homeowners from having a deck that would be permitted in any other similar community in the township. That was not, that was not the goal. And as you can see on the plan that Mr. Brewer put on the screen, that's in your packet, you're not creating a situation where, you know, if NVR builds, sells a home that takes up the building envelope and builds a 10-foot deck extension on the back of that, you're not creating a situation where the decks are on top of each other, they're still at least 30 feet apart. So if the homeowners are good with it, and the developer is good with it, and it doesn't impact anybody else in the township, I would ask the supervisors to keep an open mind and review the request in that light and in consideration of those facts. Please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. We don't have any subdivision zoning applications. We have ordinances and resolutions for consideration. Luke Revan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In your packet this morning is a draft Resolution 5 of 2025. The resolution would adopt a 401A retirement plan for the township. If you'll cast your minds back to the process by which we came to a new contract with the Police Association, one of the provisions of that contract is that we provide an incentive for voluntary contributions to the existing 457B plan. After a lot of research with our consultants, we've come to the conclusion that the best way to satisfy that incentive is to create an additional 401A plan, at which point we can match up to a certain point per pay period, contributions to the township's 457B plan. The resolution in front of you describes the details of that plan, and at this time, I'm happy to either answer questions, or I would respectfully ask the board to adopt Resolution 5 of 2025.
Do you have any questions on Resolution 5 of 2025?
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 5 of 2025, adoption of East Brandywine Township 401A Plan, as just stated by Mr. Revan.
I'll second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going, do you have any public comment on non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll move on to notices. There was no executive session held prior to this meeting, and there will be a foundation meeting following this board meeting. You get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Favor?
Aye.
Aye.